Good morning. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen working meeting to order for Monday, October 25th at 9:30 a.m. It is now 9:34. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shain's president.
Chad Sexton Duranian president.
Veronica Calhoun president. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being video recorded and will be posted on YouTube later. Could I have... Are there any chairman's additions and deletions? I have none. Any other additions or deletions?
No.
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
Ross, anything? All right. First item of business is... We do have two items of business here, is to appoint Lynn Pinkerton to the Council on Aging for a term beginning today through June of 2023. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Lynn Pinkerton to the Council on Aging for a term beginning October 25th, 2021, through June of 2023.
Second?
Any discussion?
No. I see that she has filled out a volunteer form and has been approved by the Council on Aging, so I'm good to go.
All right. Ready for a vote? All those in favor?
Joe Shain, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calhoun, yes. Congratulations, Lynn.
Yes. Thank you for your service.
All right. Moving on to meeting business 4.1. This is just left over from last week's Board of Selectmen meeting to finalize the TA search committee. We did receive a volunteer response form from Don Hayes, so I believe our committee is all appointed. Is that correct?
Yeah, I've seen that.
All right. And then we also wanted to discuss the criteria for the search committee. And Chad, since you're on the committee, would you like to go through the document that you put together for that?
Yes. I pulled that up. So we formally voted on Don Hayes to be able to be on there, so that puts a board of five individuals. And this is for the Town Administrator Search Committee. What I put together, and I sent it out this morning... I thought I sent it out yesterday, but when I was putting my files together this morning, I realized I didn't. Basically, it would be the mission. The Town Administrator Screening Committee is responsible for presenting the names of three to five individuals who shall be considered finalists to the Town Board of Selectmen for consideration for appointment to the Town Administrator of Townsend. Do you want me to read the whole thing, Madam Chair?
No, I guess...
Just the objectives?
The objectives would be good because we haven't settled on those.
Okay. So the mission just basically goes over what we have discussed in previous meetings. For objectives, the first order of business is to choose a chairperson. Second order of business of the first meeting is to choose a secretary so that we have minutes. There is... I don't know if you want... In my research, I found that there was written affidavits from each committee members that they wouldn't be discussing any of the names, addresses, or any information in regards to the applicants outside of the three that's being submitted to the selectmen. So I didn't know if you wanted to keep that. We can change that if you'd like. Any information about the candidates need to be held in strict confidence. And then the committee votes for their recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. The pertaining candidate... Or the names and information pertaining to the candidates not chosen as finalists is going to be remaining confidential, which I think is important. The next order of business is that to meet with the Board of Selectmen to discuss the questions regarding the Town Administrator job description, review process of interviews, discuss interview questions as prepared by both the Selection Committee and Board of Selectmen with possible additional questions from the public and a set interview date. So I didn't know how you wanted to work that process. We had, in our interim Town Administrator search, we came up with the questions and then we cut it down to what we wanted to do. So I thought the Selection Committee can put their questions together and bring it to us to say these are the questions we'd like to ask, or do we... However you want to do it. The next...
Can I back up one question?
Sure.
How do you select which candidates to be interviewed? In other words, are you interviewing all candidates? So I'm looking at this. I see me with the Board of Selectmen to discuss questions regarding the job description. Okay. Review the process of interviews. Is that where that question that I'm asking right now comes in?
Yes.
So who do we, the Board of Selectmen, prefer to see? I mean, where do we say we want a candidate with experience? We will take a candidate without experience? We will... You know, those sorts of things. We want someone with a finance background?
We would be submitting a job description to the search committee with those particular...
We, the Board of Selectmen, will be...
Yeah, I don't think it's as much a job description as it is sort of characteristics or skills that the board wants. And I think, Veronica, you know, does some... Touch on a couple. Does the person have to have been a town administrator for five years? Or would you accept reasonable outside experience?
Are they a procurement officer now? Do they... All of that kind of stuff. So I think it's something that we would give the search committee that these are the criteria that we're looking for.
Okay. So...
I thought you mentioned that the search committee was going to bring us a list of questions that they wanted to ask.
As well, yes.
As well, okay.
And I think the search committee can ask their own questions when they're screening people.
Absolutely, yeah.
The board will have their questions when the people get to you. But let the screening committee develop their own interview questions.
Right. So my thought was that we give them a basic outline of what we're looking for and then they can develop however they want as far as their questioning and process.
Okay. So 2.5. The Board of Selectmen will submit to the Screening Committee preferences for administrate TA background qualifications. I'm going to give you that after we're done.
Right. So my thought was, under the objectives, is the first meeting, they need to establish their...
Structure.
Structure. And they also need to...
Sign the affidavit.
Sign the affidavit, but more importantly, understand what the process is that we're looking for.
Okay. So we need a... Some sort of form from Adam? Don't those have to be affidavits, need to be notarized, etc.?
It depends on form we want it. I understand that all preliminary candidates are confidential and names can't be disclosed.
Yeah, it should be pretty easy.
All right. Not notarized.
Unless you want that, but I think that...
I don't think so.
You're giving them instructions.
I hadn't even thought of the affidavit.
They need to understand what's open session and what's executive session. Such as when their first meeting is obviously open session because they're going to elect officers or positions. When they start talking about qualifications and job descriptions, that's all open session. It's not until they get names and resumes in front of them that they go into executive session.
Correct. So the executive session, they would need the individuals that are on the... That have been selected for the committee have a good understanding of what the open meeting laws are. And that is when they are actually discussing the... Right. The individuals, as far as their names and qualifications, is actually the executive session. And they need to understand that those need to be kept in common. As far as discuss interview questions as prepared by both the Select Committee and the Board of Selectmen. And I put in with possible additional questions from the public and with set interview dates. That's if anybody wanted to submit questions to the Selection Committee, it would be up to the Selection Committee to take those and incorporate into their work, too. I want to make sure that we have a component for the public body. The receive and review resumes is presented by the interim Town Administrator. I propose that we have all resumes and cover letters go directly to the interim Town Administrator to then distribute to the search committee so that no other person is going to be seeing that. There to conduct interviews of selected candidates utilizing the established questions as above. Compare the experience qualifications and interview performance of candidates to identify 35 finalists for reference and background checks by agreed-upon designee of both the Town Administrator Screening Committee and the Board of Selectmen. I didn't know how, Madam Chair, you'd want to do that as far as checking references. That would be... Need to clarify number two.
Well, there might be two background checks.
Yeah. I mean, I would suggest that the Screening Committee do the background checks on their proposed finalists. And when the select board gets down to the point where they're about to pick somebody, then you do another background check if you wish, or you simply look at what the Screening Committee came up with.
So my thought is that if they do the background checks and then we can run the quarry, then we... Do you run the quarry before or until you actually appoint somebody?
Probably right at the end of the process. So when the selectmen are getting down to narrow someone down, do the quarry then. I wouldn't do it at the Screening Committee.
No, you're right. But I'm saying when the three individuals are presented, would we be able to do quarries then? Or do we do it until we narrow down one candidate?
I would probably narrow it down to one candidate. I don't know what's typically done now.
I think that's the best way to do that. And hopefully the reference checks were uncovered something that the quarry would have found anyway.
Then to need to review the outcome of the reference and background checks and take a vote to present unranked a list chosen of three to five candidates to the Board of Selectmen. Did you want me to leave three to five or do you want just three?
I would say three to five.
That's okay.
I mean, depends on how many. Hopefully, we get enough that we can pick three to five.
Check them, yeah. Be nice.
I then have the committee chairperson will meet with the Board of Selectmen to present names and resumes of the finalists. The secretary will prepare all the minutes of each meeting and act to maintain confidentiality of non-selected candidates and will assist the chairman in the preparation of the committee's final report. And then the chairman with a majority vote of the membership will provide a summary report of the committee's work for the Board of Selectmen with one copy filed for archival purposes with the Townsend Town Clerk no later than two weeks after committee is dissolved by the Board of Selectmen. So if anybody questions the process, we have a formal report in regards to that committee. Then the memberships are the voting. The conditions, I thought, is... I don't know if this is a little too narrow.
Okay. So that's prior to... I mean, that's after you get the candidates. What about the work prior? So do you see what I'm saying? Like, this isn't going to be just four to five weeks.
Correct.
There's going to be work previous to that.
I wanted to put some sort of timeline on this.
Yeah, I think we should talk about timelines. Like, when do we want to have the posting out? How long do we want to post for? And, you know, I mean, we have... We have asked for a limited amount of time. So we need to... So we need to talk about the timeline. When do you anticipate the first meeting to be held? When do we anticipate the first meeting? I would say within the next two weeks.
I would say yes. I would like to get them as quickly as possible.
Okay. So by November 8th?
And that would be the first meeting?
That's the first meeting. That's the organizational meeting. So meet by November 8th. So that's this week and next week?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we have a meeting on the 27th. No, the 17th. Is it the 2nd and the...
2nd and the 17th.
And is it the 17th or the 16th?
I'm looking right now.
I have everything out, but my calendar...
Maybe it's the 3rd and the...
I think it's the 2nd.
The 2nd and the 16th.
2nd and the 16th. Okay. So on the 16th, meet with the Board of Selectmen to discuss questions regarding... So we could meet on the 16th. Meet with the committee. Past the OS. Okay. And then that would be an initial meeting. I don't know that you guys have the work to do. So will we be ready to post before Thanksgiving?
Well, if we meet by the 8th, we can come up with a timeline with the committee, I would assume, to be able to then, you know, say that we need to meet by the 16th with the questions. So maybe we can come up with, we, the board, we, the search committee, would be able to decide how we're going to do it. Because we have to have... The selectmen have to have the job description and all of the criteria set before that. Would the selectmen have everything ready by 11:16 to give to the search committee?
We'd have special term meeting. I don't know yet.
Yeah, because it's kind of... Going to be kind of tight.
When do we want to post? And how long do we want the post open? And when do we want to have someone in place? So let's start with when do we want to have someone in place? I would like to have someone in place no later than April 1st.
Okay. I agree with that.
I'll be with that. Ross, you going to be here long enough for that?
I'll be here until June 1st, or you have a replacement. But I was thinking, why not aim for January or something? You know, or February. You know, figure a three-month process. So we're...
November?
November, December, January.
I'm concerned about the search committee having time to organize and to get everything all ready by now.
Let's back it up. Okay. So let's shoot for having a TA... I think that's really... Having a TA picked no later than April 1st, but with a target date of February 1st to April 1st, depending on what we get in.
Yeah. I mean, you figure if the person's working, they're going to give at least a month's notice. So if you make your decision April 1st, they're not starting until...
Oh, no, no, no. I'm not saying that's a start date. I'm talking start date here. No later than April 1st.
Yes. So yes, I agree. Okay, I agree in that respect. So let's say that we have a decision by the end of January.
Yeah.
And then give time to... For them to be able to...
Okay. Decision from committee to... So this number three thing here...
Yes.
Is by January 30th. And then it cuts to us. I mean, if we can get someone in here, you know, February 1st, I think, is quick. But March 1st is within the realm of possibilities. So by January 30th, the unranked list of candidates.
Correct.
Does that sound reasonable? I don't... I think that...
I think there's plenty of time. I mean, I think they could do it... End of December, that's tough with all the holidays, but...
Well, that's why I'm thinking the first meeting with the search committee has to set a very aggressive schedule on what this is what our timeline is. So I want us, the Board of Selectmen, to be particular on what exactly we want for our timeline so that the search committee has a firm understanding that we need to have this done by this particular day.
If you start with the job description and the posting, get the posting out there, you can be fine-tuning your questions and your selection criteria while the applications are coming in.
Are you going to do that posting or we, as a board?
I was hoping the search committee to do that. I would help them edit places, but I hope they would write what they want.
So what we...
Can we do the job postings by 11:16, do you think?
Only if we get to... Only if we get together by November 2nd, which we could, to give to you guys our criteria.
November 2nd meeting, we would have to have it so we can say what we want and you guys move forward from there.
So the OS will submit to the Screening Committee our preferences for, you know, background qualifications, blah, blah, blah. So that would be November 2nd. And then you guys can work on the posting and the description and get that out ASAP. Because if you could get that out by November, and then we would post going forward, possible that we would, by mid-January then, you guys could have candidates to us. All right. So November 2nd.
Yeah. BOs putting a list together for the criteria.
Yeah.
BOs criteria for TA search. Okay. And then you guys in your first meeting...
Do you have a copy of what the current job description is, Joe?
Uh, no.
No, I don't think there is one.
Yeah, there's a couple floating around. There's one that was written, I want to say, in 2015. There was another one that was written in 2018.
By the town of Townsend?
It's written in... It's on the town server.
Because the Collins report did not include... That was the only job that was not included in that report.
Correct.
Well, there are job description that's out there in 2015 and 2018, just scrap it.
Well, no, this is my thought, Joe. I appreciate...
It's a good one.
I appreciate your thought, but here's the thing. I don't believe that we need to throw anything out until we actually look at it. So there's a couple of job descriptions that I have found on the server. So what I thought, and there are also job descriptions from other towns that I think we need to compare them to. So what I can do is compile a list of the different ones that I have come up with and send to you guys. If that's okay. Unless you want me to send them to Ross and then he can distribute it however you want. And then review those, come up with your thoughts on how we want to do it, and I can piece it all together if you want.
I made it easy. We just need him. Just duplicate him and we're going to be fine.
I'll get my clone out here.
Work on that for us, will you?
That would be Ross's assignment for you.
Yeah, that's your assignment.
You're having a month. You clone yourself to that guy.
Well, depending when the person starts and what their background is and public budget things, we can work on an overlap so that there's some training and some assistance.
That's what I planned in the funds for special term meeting. I was planning a one-month overlap.
I mean, it's always tough to start in the middle of budget and town meeting season, which the February to April timeframe would be. And I wouldn't leave until that person is... Well, I wouldn't offer to leave until that person is ready to go. You could get rid of me anytime you want, but... I would help with the transition, yeah.
Because my thought is that we would... Where we have focused your tasks in right now, then the new one, we could have take on some of the other issues to keep him focused on budget and the employment stuff for now. And then when we bring the new person on, we can then concentrate on the other areas that we might need help that would be more longer-term functioning.
Well, this person will be called on. Ross is only part of the time.
No, I understand what I'm saying.
I would think that Ross would spend that time... We can talk about this later. Transitioning the new person in whatever way he needs to to get them going. And then because they should understand that they're picking up the full boat on day one with the transition period.
Correct. But we have some longer-term things that we are currently working on that I think if we can engage the new Town Administrator in that particular process when they first get here, that's going to help us more longer-term. Does that make sense? Am I saying that correctly?
I think when you figure out who it is and what it is, we can figure out how we're going to divide things up. And I've talked to some Town Administrators about an overlap and they say, anybody worth their salt wouldn't want the other guy hanging around. They want to start their own show. Well, I think that's...
That might be true.
A little strange because why not have someone show you where everything is and what the process is?
What we've worked on building, to work on, we don't want to have to restock that over.
Yeah, I think...
Absolutely.
And maybe that's part of your selection criteria. Are you willing to have the interim guy stick around as an assistant or some form as an overlap? They say yes or no, you know.
Well, I think it's important that we do.
Part of my personal ground rules is collaboration and that's important for us to be able to move forward. So...
All right. So I guess what we could... Keep it written as it is, but under timeline, November 2nd, the Board of Selectmen will provide criteria for the search and will review the job description.
So I think as quickly as that can happen with us to provide to the search committee, we'll also then provide the search committee a rather short timeline to get the posting set and to... I assume you're going to post it for us, Ross, right?
Yeah, I'll post it on the MRA website and any other places you can think of.
Right. So the posting itself, everything would be... The search committee then would give it directly to Ross and then Ross would be able to post.
I would want to review the posting. Are you saying we don't review the posting? I don't have to formally review it then.
I just want to make sure we, as a board, have the final say before that gets posted.
Yeah, that goes under.
But see, that's a double-edged sword because, you know, in speaking to a few people just over the past week or so, knowing that we're doing search committees, very reluctant to take in, really do much. Or some of the people that have been on some of these search committees have had recommendations and the board is flat-out went against them. They're like, they're wasting their time. So I think maybe, this is my opinion, if Chad is going to be on that committee, he's a seated Board of Selectmen. He knows what our criteria is. I think it may be cleaner if we let that search committee do exactly what they need, come up with what we are looking for because they know our criteria, and then move on. If we stick our nose into it, I think it's going to be the same perception that's out there. And I think we let the search... Make sure we, as a board, make sure we get to Chad to understand that when he's in that search committee, these are what we're looking for. And we make sure we have them in there.
Okay. So then I need clarification as far as what it means when we say "meet with the Board of Selectmen to discuss questions regarding the Town Administrator job description, review process of interviews, discuss interview questions as prepared by both the Selection Committee and the Board of Selectmen with possible additional questions from the interview from the public." What does that mean?
That means exactly that, that we are... That means exactly that, that we are talking with the search committee to make sure that the wishes of the Board of Selectmen are put into the criteria for the selection. We are, we are having a selection committee to do that, a selection committee. And I'm going to echo what Joe said, is that in the past, that hasn't been happening. You know, we are, we, we formed a committee to do the job of that particular function, and their function is to put this process together. We have a voice on there by having a selectman on there. So I don't think we need to, and I agree with you that, you know, they're, they're charged with getting, getting candidates to the Board of Selectmen. It is our turn then to take those, those candidates to pick one of those, one of those ones. But as far as the search criteria and all of that, I think it's solely on the search committee and it should be solely on the search committee. I don't think we need to micromanage that.
I, I think that when we get below number three, yes, totally, you know, but prior to that, I, I don't know, Ross, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
Well, the, the posting itself is pretty generic. I mean, that's three paragraphs that say we, we want somebody that is good at this, this, and this. And that's about it for posting. The job description takes more work, isn't it? And then the specifically what the board wants as selection criteria takes more work, but that happens, that can happen after you get your posting out there.
Okay.
I mean, I expect you're gonna say you want a certain amount of financial skills, you want a certain amount of personnel skills, you want a certain amount of project management skills.
Budgeting skills.
Yeah, under financing, yeah.
You know, yeah.
You want someone who's community oriented. You want somebody who can talk to the public and talk to the employees.
Okay, then I'm gonna change this to, we will give, we, the Board of Selectmen on November second will give the criteria, what, what Ross was just saying, to you guys.
Yep.
You do the posting and put it out there as long as our criteria is met.
Exactly.
And then the job description, I'm moving this further down because this is more ongoing then. The job description follows the requirements, the qualifications are.
Well, I'm thinking now, most job postings will refer someone to a job description that's on your webpage or someplace. So you want the job description ready when you're close or, or pretty close to the same time.
So what I'm trying to decide is do we like, run like crazy to get this done by the second, next week, Tuesday? Or do we take a little bit more time on this and do it on the sixteenth?
I think the job description reviewed and your requirements is probably aggressive for the second. The job description will take a while for you to.
Right.
For Chaz to find them, circulate ones he likes, and once you mark them up and settle back.
So this, the second, I think, should be maybe, I mean, the search committee should, should report, I guess we could do it that way, on who the chair is, who the secretary is, blah, 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 so that they, that the Board of Selectmen know that they have seated everybody.
That, that, we want that by the eighth, so.
And when is your next working session?
Next working session is the eighth. My next working session here is the eighth.
So why don't we have the, the.
In the working session.
So you could go over the job descriptions and all of that in the eighth?
Yeah, that, that's better. I'm just thinking, okay, November seventh. Okay, so November eighth work session, that's where I'll put that.
I will not be in town on the eighth. You know that, right? Sixth through the twentieth, I'm out of town.
Right. You have access to a computer?
Do I?
Will you?
Maybe.
That's what the intro.
I know that wasn't the answer you were looking for, but.
Well, you could, you could zoom if you wanted to.
Yeah, I, I, I'll put it on the eighth instead of the eighth.
Because I don't have a computer. I only have an iPad.
Oh, great.
That's right, but you can use your phone, right?
Oh, no, the laptop will work for a Zoom. It'll work.
My iPad can work on a Zoom, but I don't have a laptop.
For, for looking from.
For the documents, okay.
Yeah. But I will have access when I'm there. I print everything out. So I'll, anything that goes in there, I can print out.
Okay, alright.
So if anything is something that someone needs me to get, just send it to me and I can print it.
You know what, I'll, I'll do, um, if it, if it pleases the board, um, I will create a folder for Joe on our SharePoint. That way I'll put all the documents in that one thing for you so that then you can print everything in that.
That's fine.
Can you access SharePoint remotely from wherever you are?
Yes.
Okay.
I can. Yes.
Okay. So are we all set on this? This is what.
November eighth, what time is the November eighth meeting?
Uh, it's a morning meeting again. I'm, I'm trying to do it on Chaz's schedule for the Monday fees available during the day. And that way too.
Nine or nine thirty?
Nine thirty.
Okay, November eighth, um, nine thirty work session. Alright, so are we good on this then?
Yep.
Alright.
Um, if I could add in aside and say that those that are on the search committee, make sure that you see the town clerk to get sworn in for your position. I would appreciate it.
And I need a Zoom for November eighth if I don't have one.
I will send out an email to everybody on the search committee to organize the first date.
Okay, so November eighth, we need a, the criteria and the job description. And you'll hold a meeting before then, so, or an organization.
Correct, and if you could.
Would, would you like that videotaped?
Uh, that's gonna be a Zoom up in.
Oh, up there, okay. That will go back up to the.
Yeah.
Okay. Nine thirty, Monday, November eighth. Thank you.
I'll, I'll send you all the details on that. Alright, um, anything else on the search committee? Think we're good on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you send me your notes? You wanna give me your notes on that and I can make the changes?
I'll make a copy before we leave today. Um, I, I don't know if you need changes or like that. Alright, um, ARPA funding. So, uh, we're moving on to that. That's the purpose for this work session today. Um, so, um, does everybody have documents from the, um, SharePoint? I don't wanna just get myself organized.
I'm gonna start with the ARPA outline?
I wanted to start with the ARPA outline, and I had made changes to that. Um, there was, if you read the ARPA outline, remember that I did, there were, um, there's a section where I kinda, um.
Can you skip a second?
Of course. Alright, so I guess, um, the two documents that I want you guys to have out first are the ARPA outline for the work session and then the one that looks like this, and then memorandum, interested parties from, um, A N F, this is from state. Um, because there are, the one that looks like this, that I gave you this morning. It's in the SharePoint as well. If, uh, yes, that is it. That is it, yes.
Got it.
Um, so, uh, if you look at the ARPA outline, um, there are four things that I pulled from one of the six documents that are in there. Um, municipalities and counties, from the ARPA recording bodies. So you can see on the gold, they report this, uh, municipalities and counties report directly to the federal government. I know that you guys have all read this. I'm doing this more for our viewing audience. Um, the Commonwealth is providing technical assistance, but we are responsible for understanding and adhering to all reporting requirements. So the reports go directly to the federal government. Um, I, I put, highlighted in blue, begin by defining projects and identifying the appropriate expenditure categories. These categories determine required metrics that apply to projects, so we'll look at that later this morning. Establish a plan for collecting and reporting data and ensuring you have the appropriate resources. Um, recipients are permitted to use funds to make improvements to data or technology infrastructure and data analytics as well as program evaluation. And then the first reporting is due January twenty twenty-two. Whereas it was supposed to be the end of October, and actually I'm gonna change that. January twenty twenty-two, West Fore Municipalities, we are an N E U, a non-entitlement unit, and I believe that is April of twenty twenty-two, if I'm reading correctly.
Right, so our first report is.
Not due until April, so we have a little bit of harm. Um, but we should be extending these funds. Identify any new, N E U recipient number, collect three required documents that must be included in the report. That's, we can do that later. Um, from the F A Qs, and this is important, may recipients use funds to cover the cost of consultants to assist with managing and administering the funds? And the answer is yes. Recipients may use funds for administering the ARPA program, including cost of consultants, to support effective management and oversight, including consultation for ensuring compliance with legal, regulatory, and other compliance, um, requirements. So that's important for a later vote. So the towns funding, um, this funding is over two years. Townsend's non-entitlement unit allocation is nine hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-nine. In fiscal year twenty-two, we received half of that, so four hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred eighty-nine fifty, and that we have already received in July, I believe it was. Fiscal year twenty-three, we received the same amount. In addition, through the, this ARPA act, counties also receive distribution. And Middlesex County opted to redistribute their amounts to all the towns and municipalities within the county. So our redistribution amount from Middlesex County is one million eight hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars. And again, we received that in two fifty percent chunks. We already received the F Y twenty-two chunk this summer, nine hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars and fifty cents. Next summer, we will receive the same for F Y twenty-three. So all total, for this fiscal year, we have one million four hundred twenty thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars to distribute in the manner that the Act allows. Um, so here, my next sentence is incomplete. All funds must be incurred by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Unused funds must be returned to the treasury. So, yeah, we don't want that to happen. We wanna use these funds. So permitted uses are, are all in those SharePoint documents that, um, you have the ability to look through. In, in my mind, um, when we look at all this, we wanna look at the things that are in the plans that we've determined. So the water master plan, um, the shared streets and spaces application, our first one that was denied in the fall of twenty twenty. The M V P plan, that includes climate change adaptations, which could be important for work. The open space and recreation plan, which we have, is expired. It expired in twenty thirteen. And the master plan that we have on file expired in two thousand one. So we effectively don't have either of those plans. But that does not stop us from going forward. So.
Can I add, we have the housing production plan that, if, the approved plan is two thousand fifteen and they are currently, what the Housing Authority is working on, a new one, which there's a lot of data in there that we can use.
Okay, twenty fifteen, and new one in the works. There's also a new master plan in the works.
Um, there is also, um, is the, um, Energy Committee working on a master plan as well?
Well, we haven't gone forward with that. Um, I mean, we approved the, we voted to do it, but I don't think they've met since then. So, um, energy master plan, and that won't be available right now for this funding. I wouldn't expect that. Not for the current fiscal year at least. So.
There's also, there's, you know, working conjunction with, um, M R P C for, for info as well, can we?
Well, that goes down to possible uses. Hire a consultant for help with project planning and reporting. So, um, we can talk about that. But before we do, I wanna go to the sample next steps in this memorandum. So I gave you a copy of that. Um, it's right there. Yeah. So everybody has that one now? Alright, the first page is stuff that you can look at. Alright, second page, sample next step, prepare to manage the grant. And, um, this would be assess existing administrative infrastructure to determine the capabilities and needs. We're gonna talk about that today. What, what is allowable? Where do we think we could use it? Establish a grant management plan, including necessary legal consultations, accounting, and audits for, for other needs. That goes with number one, hire a consultant for help with project planning and reporting. And the question becomes, who do we hire? Are we hiring, um, uh, the consultant that has been helping us with R C, R B L F funding, the CARES Act funding? Or M R P C is another possibility, but I wouldn't necessarily wanna use both of them. So that's something that we have to think about. Do we hire one for the accounting piece and another for the project management piece? Or do we go with the same consultant? So questions to think about. But before we do that, number two, calculate the revenue loss amount for calendar year twenty twenty. And I would recommend that we do this ASAP because we already have the funds in hand, and I'm wondering if we could include that for the special town meeting funding. Um, there's a, in one of the documents that I put up, um, it's the one that looks like this, and it, it's five days ago. So if you have this, if you go to the very last page of that, so it's this one, it's about thirteen pages, and I just posted it on, I think, Thursday. I posted it after we met. Um, if I have an extra.
No, I'm sorry.
It's done, yeah.
What is it, what's it look like?
You can keep that. Um, so if you look at the very back page of this.
Page thirteen?
Um, yeah, it's page thirteen.
Okay.
That is the, and the page before, definition of general revenue. So the, let's go to page twelve, the second to last page first. Included revenue categories, state or local governments, so money that we didn't get. I don't think we have liquor store revenue, tax revenue that didn't come in, current charges like tolls, airports, I don't think that there's, maybe water system, I don't know. Miscellaneous general revenue. So anything that comes in normally, um, can be included in the, excluded is revenue from the federal government and government, blah, 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 it's all there. Alright, you cannot use this to say, oh, instead of hiking taxes, we're gonna use this money. You can't use it that way. But you can say, last year, our revenue was down X percent from, um, uh, real estate assessments. And that can be used. So on the back page is the formula. And the growth adjustment that is used is the larger, of four point one percent, or the recipient's actual annual revenue growth over the three-fourth fiscal year prior to the COVID-nineteen health emergency. So you can look at this, and that's how you calculate it. And I would want to use a consultant to do that, to look at what we have and do that. And I would want to use a consultant to do that, to look at what we have and do that. But I, but we have the funds in hand. If we define, this is one of the things that we can do and use it for. We may be able to move those funds now, prior to the special town meeting, into wherever we move them to, to make them accessible to us for purposes of filling in the gap that we need for the adjustment.
Sure, right now.
That's my thought, anyway.
So we're using that solutions company, I believe, for the CARES Act, right? That's working with us?
Capital Strategic Solutions.
I think it might be better if we use one firm for both, because they know the money, they can implement. I think it would be better than having two separate firms. Because then they're talking back and forth. This way, it's all within in-house, it may be better.
And we already are contracted. So that's, yeah. So that, we need to consider this, who we're going to use for, because I think we need someone for grant management, for setting up the projects. And if you looked at the recording, it's not just, okay, we spent this much. There are interim steps. You have to define your project and define your interim steps. So we're going to need someone to help us with that.
Well, we don't have the administrative support to do that, so I agree that we need to have. Capital Solutions has, in my mind, because they have been, I've been getting a lot of emails in regards to the functions that they have been doing with other communities. They've also, there's a public service announcement, I guess you'd call them, that they've been sending out to all towns and organizations that, you know. I believe, number one, and I think I expressed this in a meeting that we had had before, I believe we need to establish them as a consultant for this particular project, because they're the ones that have the established connections. They know the reporting structure. They also have a good understanding of what we, our needs here in this town. My question would be to Ross, is there a process that we need to follow to be able to engage them as a consultant?
I think we ought to ask him for a quote, and then he gives a ballpark on what it's going to be worth, and then we can determine what that procurement process is, if we have a ballpark.
I would also like to review, we have a current contract with them. And in an email, Jennifer said that it was written such that it would cover the ARCA Act if we chose to extend it. So we should look at that, because I think it would be the same.
So we can take the current contract and extend that?
That was my understanding. But we should look at that as well. Because it may just be a matter of extending the contract. She said she had written it such that, and I didn't bring that contract with me.
Well, I would.
So my, I feel like we already have CSS in place. I think we should continue with them for both the project planning and the reporting. I wouldn't necessarily go to MRPC for the project.
Well, I wasn't not looking for MRPC for project planning. I was looking for specifics that we may need.
Such as?
Well, we'll get into that, I mean, when we talk about specific projects.
They might still help with the projects, but not with the project.
Not with the administration.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, so grant manager.
So do you want to take a vote on that?
Yes. So do we have a motion to move forward with doing what we need to do to hire, to continue working with Capital Strategic Solution and Jennifer Thompson for the ARCA funding?
So, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Judge Kaid.
Judge Sexton, great, yeah.
So Ross, do you want to look at that, or do you want me to check in with Jennifer?
That's your role, if you wouldn't mind.
I'll check in with Jennifer. Continue working with her.
That's your role.
Did we vote yet?
We just did.
Oh, I could tell, yes.
I'm falling asleep on this over there.
Yeah, I'm just moving on. All right.
And, excuse me, and if they think there's funds that they can allocate into the general fund now, or by town meeting, you have to do it quite instantly, because we're real close.
Yeah.
Before November 1st?
It has to be before the warrant is closed?
Send me a placeholder that says we want an article that transfers money from this account to that account.
Okay.
And it can be just that vague, but shortly after that, I'll need the actual wording. I mean, you can always open the warrant again and close it if something comes up at the last minute, but. I'm trying to get organized for this, so we don't have a lot of last-minute scrambling.
I agree.
Yes, all right, so send Ross a request.
And we will be looking for all types of funding. I'm trying to get free cash certified by them and other sources, so we can avoid raising appropriate issues.
Exactly. All right, number three is establish a planning process for determining how to allocate CLRF resources, including stakeholder engagement efforts, and then identify programs and projects to support with CLRF resources. Number five, write a formal eligibility determination and attach the relevant supporting materials, meaning emails, meeting minutes, for each program or project supported by CLRF. So this is part of the project plan, and you have to include documentation for every project that you do. So if we choose, you know, Project X, any meetings that are held that discuss that project, any emails that go back and forth regarding that project, all of that has to be included. So there's a lot of reporting that goes with this, and there's a reporting structure that we're going to need to set up. And I'm hoping the consultant can do that once we choose our projects. Implement a process to collect and report financial data and key performance indicators to the federal government. This would also be the consultant who would work with those. So our job today is to start talking about what do we want?
The money?
Well, we have the money.
We have it.
We'll have to spend it now.
How are we spending it? So I'm not going to go through any of the other documents, like at this instant. What I'm going to give each of us three is one of these. So my thought is, we're going to post these up here, what we want. I would like to ask other departments and boards to come into this room before November 8, our next working session. Look at these, take their own, post it, I'll put it up here. And across these two boards, what are the ideas that the boards and committees have that they would like to see implemented? So, so that I don't color my list, I hope you guys have yours. I don't want to color your thoughts. I'm going to give you. And Ross, do you want to be part of this? Or you want to just, do you want to put yours up too? Okay with me.
No, we're going.
Grab a marker.
Oh, we're going to go play in school, telling today?
We're going rogue.
I'm sorry, this is, yeah.
I'm not good at that.
I would normally add what are projects, I think were big capital projects, but I haven't seen that list yet, so.
Grab a marker. We can write capital projects. So here we go, these are stickies. Joe, you got one?
Yeah, what are you going with this?
Well, we're going to post it up there. Ross, you're going to post one. Ross, you get to post one, and I get to post one.
You're too close to mine. No, me, let me.
And this is ARCA funds, right?
It's what?
This is the use of ARCA funds.
Use of ARCA funds. Thought on what we can use the funds for. And I'm doing this so that I don't color the, I mean, I could say here's what I'll do, you know? But if we all do it at the same time, we get a better prospect. So there's chat.
I'm not sure you gave me a pen, it doesn't work right.
Oh, well then, you know, I gave all my markers to, yes, understand, to the rec department. And this was the only set I had.
Where's finding your list on, oh, I was there.
If that one doesn't work.
No, this is, this is the list that I put together that I wanted to.
I think I have 10 on my.
You better get another sheet, girl.
No, I don't think maybe four is enough. Now we'll see. I've got this written down, but I have too many papers. Okay, I'm running out, huh? That's impossible.
Now, this is my touch. She's writing smaller.
I am?
Me too.
Trying to fill it in.
I think I got the boogies. Okay. Come on. All right, so I'm coming on here. Ross has CARES, do you think I can take you?
You all have something, you can.
Do you want to put yours up there too?
Can you go over, I have great in bridges, yeah? Upgrade, I'm sure. Let's see, this truck. Well, I think we're all generally got same, well, somewhat. Yeah, somewhat in the same area, Green Hill Road, bridges.
I haven't gotten into that, but all eight of you guys already got that on.
Water truck, PFA, asset upgrade, capital planning, public safety.
Write small at the bottom there, grab another page if you have more chat.
You can write on mine, I'll let you.
I think the one, I mean, looking at this, at least on three of them, I'm making. The Green Hill Road Bridge.
Yeah.
If it fits under, it has to have either a water, for infrastructure, it has to be water, sewer, broadband.
Yes, and it actually can have a combination of all of those two.
Right, so if, so I put Green Hill Road down as culvert replacement. Because in the MVP Plan, you can put in, I'm assuming they're putting in a bigger culvert. I don't really know the whole project, but if they are, that would be for climate change purposes. In big weather events, like what we're getting the next couple of days, you know, it keeps it from running over the road, et cetera, et cetera.
They could put a box culvert in there.
Well, wasn't there a water line going to go up that way too?
Up Green Hill Road, are they putting a water line up there?
I thought there was talk of putting it up there and then running it across the bridge, which would then open up water line.
Is that part of the project that we did out?
I don't know that.
I think there's only three or four houses that pass that bridge.
There are.
So, you know, I mean, you got to look at that cost factor for three or four houses to run. I don't know how much that would be, but they would have to look at that.
Well.
Houses, got it. How many houses up there?
One, two, three, I can name four possible.
I think there's a total of seven.
And where does that water line stop? Right by the bridge, right or something?
Beforehand.
It's before Mason Road, I thought.
That is correct.
The water line goes up to Mason Road, so.
Six properties.
Yeah, it's only six properties, it's not a lot of properties beyond.
It is not, but that also is, the, it's not specifically in the bid as far as the water is concerned, but there has to be accommodations for it in, if in the future there was, there was water there. And the thought is, it can be added to it. It would be the water department's responsibility to do it, not the people doing the bridge, right? I would assume.
And Dr. Big was the big. The build out with what we have now would fit under the MVP Plan. I think, you know, the justification to make it a climate change thing would be in that plan.
So I understood the town allocated $500,000 at a previous town meeting, and the bids came in like a million five.
We have, we, we, the town has put forward, it's either 500 or 700,000 for that bridge. The, we have a grant for 500. I think that the money that the town put forward, now maybe it was 200,000, the town put forward, 200,000. That has already been spent on the engineering. The 500,000 is a grant that's extended until September of 2022. And we need another million point four, I believe.
But do we have to go out to state bid contracts for that? I mean, can we just try to go local or something, see if someone that's certified to build the bridge?
No, it has to be procured, and it's already been.
Go through procurement, that someone locally can bid on it.
But that's what I'm getting at. I mean, have we, anybody local? I mean, there's enough companies, Powells and all this.
There was a bid that went out last spring, and it was opened in May, I believe. And the, the highest bidder was awarded it. Um, they backed out because for their bid, there was something wrong with their bid. So then the second highest bidder, we talked about this in June, and I mean.
You mean, you mean lowest bidder?
Yes, lowest. Did I say highest?
Yes, you did.
I'm going from, so the, the lowest bidder backed out. So we went to the next lowest bidder, and that one is, is who I think has been worked with right now. But what was not determined when the bid went out was how we, the town, were going to pay for it. That was never discussed.
Well, and, and I was reading that a little bit, the way that bridge was going to be constructed, you know, steel construction, blah, 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 the whole nine yet. How, what if we just look, you know, maybe talk to Jimmy and, and talk about, I see it being done different places. Do the box culvert by far would be cheaper.
That's the plan that they do.
That's what they work?
I thought that was the plan.
Yeah.
The box?
It's, it's a three-sided concrete with, yeah, that's, that's what this, this bid is. Um, when we talked in June, June twenty-fifth, I think it was. Um, confirming that their bid was still open and it is to include updated schedules and pricing impacts. That would, that's what we asked for because of the pricing differences. And a schedule of options. And we wanted a confirmation on their updated bid price and a schedule based on, um, when they wanted, when.
I thought we got that back.
Then, yeah, but I'm saying in June, that's what we, that's what we did, that's what we asked for. And that was for MAS Building and Bridge Incorporated.
So in other words, Joe, to answer your question, the bidding already happened.
Yeah.
Done.
Yeah, it's done.
Going back out to bid and see what we get? I mean, I don't know. I mean, if we're a million dollars in the hole, we got to think of an alternative plan, I think.
Well, we're not, we just, we haven't spent the money yet, but that's, the bids all came in over a million.
But that's what I.
But you, we, we have, the major concern that I have is that we've already, we had a grant for the engineering to get it done.
Yeah.
And that has been spent.
Right.
We also have a partial grant, I think it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that is contingent upon us.
No, it's five hundred thousand, contingent upon us bidding out.
Right, contingent.
The money for the engineering was the two hundred thousand the town put forward.
Correct, right. So what, what I'm saying is, is that we, we're committed.
Yeah, we have.
We, we already have committed.
We are committed to committing.
And the reason why we're committed is because this process all happened before we sought for the funding. So it was, this was done backwards, technically.
Yeah.
Um, so what we have to find out, and I think this is where Jennifer can come in, is can we use this funding? Because if we can, I would favor doing seven hundred thousand of this this year and seven hundred thousand next year. Because the bridge isn't going to get built until next spring, summer. It will overlap the two fiscal years of.
Use some of that money.
Of money. So seven hundred thousand is about half. If we took all of it this year and committed it just to that, we could probably do it. But we have another one point four next year.
Correct.
So why don't we do, if we can do it, one point four million total from the Arca funds.
Seven hundred, seven.
Seven hundred and seven hundred. Will that work? Ross, I see you doing your head thing.
Uh, we'd have to look in to see whether you could get the contractor to say, just do, we'll contract you for half the project. And what does that mean if you don't get the funding?
No, 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 she wasn't saying that.
No, I'm saying, contract them for the full amount.
Yeah.
But take the, have the funding take place such that seven hundred K in FY twenty-two, seven hundred K in FY twenty-three.
And they would phase the project and bill us.
Yes, that's hurting me.
That is correct.
That's how I.
Shot the project towards the end of the twenty-two, to though it goes into twenty-three.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, there's another piece to this that I want to throw out there that, um, the, I, I had brought this up before and, and this is, has to do with Chapter ninety funds, and I was told, nope, that's all we're getting, that's all that we're getting. There is still, um, three hundred million, million in local infrastructure that's in a bond bill. That includes two hundred million for Chapter ninety local roads, and that's still being voted on by the legislature. So there is a possibility that they will be adding more money to Chapter ninety within the next two years.
But is, is that dependent on the bill in Congress, federal?
Yes.
So it's dependent on that. So until that gets, and that will be for roads, paving roads?
Yes.
Et cetera, et cetera.
And the reason why I'm bringing.
But we don't have that yet.
But the reason why I'm bringing this up is because if we took all of our Chapter ninety money right now, we can fund this bridge. But we will not have any other funding for any other roads. Okay?
For just one year.
For one year. Alright, so if our, if, if this funding doesn't come through, technically we have the, the Chapter ninety money coming to, to be able to, to build the bridge.
Yeah, but I like Veronica's idea. If we can pull this off, that this money, the one point four million, we can use half of it in twenty-two, building it out so we're working in twenty-three, and then we get that money, use half and half, that'd be really great. That, that, that's what I would look into first.
And we could, I mean, if we could accept the bid such that we would use Arca funds or that, depending on what's.
That's correct. This will buy us enough time, number one. Number two is, I don't believe that we need to enter into that exclusion.
That's what I'm hoping.
That's the other, only other option that we would have, and I personally don't think we need to go to that.
I, I agree. So if we can, but we don't know about that other infrastructure bill.
Bingo, yeah.
Um, and won't.
But you're going to talk to Jennifer, I believe you said?
Well, we'll invite her to, we'll first find, I'll first find out that the contract is right, we'll do what we can to contract it. And then we could invite her to our work session.
Well, if I could engage the citizens to write local, our local congressman and/or Sheila Harrington or Senator, Senator Cronin in regards to their support for the current bill that's in, that's in the Mass state legislature right now. To increase funding for the Chapter ninety funding, because the state has the money right now.
Alright, so we send something out, yeah, on that.
They, they, it's unclear, um, when they're going to resolve the, the differences between a couple of bills that they have. But the money, the surplus is already in the state, and the state has it. It just not, it has not been released yet. So we need to have as much support if, if we are looking to improve our roads here in Townsend. We need to actually engage our, Sheila Harrington, our, our state representative, and we need to talk to Senator Cronin in regards to that as well.
Okay. Um, so I'm going to move on, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm dotting here. I'm seeing this as a definite possibility.
Yes.
It are common things. Okay. So the next one, the PFAS plan, water treatment. Do we have an idea of what that's going to cost?
Yes.
And what is that?
Was that a one point eight or something?
That's today. It, that, that bridge was only going to be like a hundred thousand or something, and, and now it's doubled, so.
Well, you're talking about the treatment plan.
Mm-hmm.
The treatment plant would be being paid for by, by the funds, right?
Well, the, the.
When I get out of that conversation.
Well, yes, the, the water department can pay for a portion of it, but if we have funds allocated through, through this and it is, there are problem areas that they need to address, that they have to, to stretch their budgets on. Alright, I think the major portion is the PFAS treatment facility that they want to be able to, to, to take care of right now. There are some other smaller projects that, that need to happen. Number one would be the Greeley Road issue that we have. There's another issue that, that's on Highland. That's taking the funds from other projects that they have already planned to, to, um, to not get that done. I want to say one point two, but I don't, I don't think I have that file with me for what the PFAS.
Okay, so.
One point eight, five. I thought he said that there was funding throughout different government and different things that were going to pay for that completely without town funding. Maybe I'm mistaken by that, but that's what I.
Well, that is correct, but this is not town funding. This is, this is.
But is this some of the money that he was talking about using?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
Potentially.
I think we should contribute at least pipe to the water department. I'm not saying give them one point two or one point eight million, but I'm saying if we could give them, you know, three hundred K per year, six hundred K, that would help enormously.
That's correct.
Especially for town water tank.
Yep.
That's correct. Now, they had, um, there, there's a, I don't, I don't remember specifically what it was, but I know South Street and one nineteen, there was a, a small project that they had there to increase the, um, the size of the pipe, I think. And they have put that off because of PFAS issues, and they want to make sure that, that, you know, the proper funds, their own internal funds are allocated properly. I think if we can help them out, that would be a great deal of, of.
I think PFAS is a big issue in town, we got to deal with.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so circle water on all four of the.
Do it a different color. Do it a different color. Do it blue. Do water.
So Ross has it too.
One would be happy, I, they were first on my list.
Oh, you, you can circle it twice on Joe's chat.
Well, could I have PFAS and then water and sewer though, is kind of, you know what I'm saying?
That's a separate thing.
That's a separate thing, sewer.
Circle in on Ross's two. It's his number two up there.
Water department.
No, that's phone system. Let's talk about that. Ross, how the, I guess my question is, how does the phone system fit in with the, was there a place that that needs to fit?
Well, that's a fair question. It's a capital project that I'm hearing or interested in. I don't know who vetted to see what the right solution is.
Okay.
Um, but it's, it's IT related.
The IT, um, the IT is kind of specific um, as far as, and I, I don't know even for my IT thing, which is, you know, I'm not, we'll have to talk to Jennifer about, she might have a better idea about what's allowed and not allowed.
The IT, what would you call it? The IT protocol or whatever that, for this finding is very, very specific. It has to be, it has to show a need for, and they have a whole list of criteria. You know, um, but. I was listing projects I was thinking were a cost of a lot of money that if we can get help, look great. If not, if they don't apply.
You know, but if we can throw money to PFAS, then the water department will have more funds for other capital things.
For their own, right. I mean, and the IT kind of goes along with all that. The IT that I have, um, as far as, you know, fiber to all-town buildings, you and I both have that. Fiber to all-town buildings then would couple into the telephone system, it will couple into a lot of other things. You know, there's huge IT infrastructure that needs to happen at the library. They have library, um, uh, meeting rooms that, that need our attention. Uh, there's, there's a lot of things in IT that, you know, I think have been overlooked in the town.
So grab another color and circle your IT, broadband to customers, the whole thing.
This whole thing?
Yeah. My number five is broadband. And I put transfer funds to TCAN because you can transfer to nonprofits. I know we just transferred the receipts, but that's operating budget. This is a separate thing.
Well, as all part of that, there, there is some moves that we're looking for and some expansion that we're looking for. Um, and that all couples with the, the fiber as well.
So, and there's two of them of Ross's that get circled. Do you have IT up there?
No, I didn't.
Okay. And the, the phone system could kind of couple into IT as well. If that's part of that fiber transfer. Okay. I see capital projects and capital planning.
Yeah, that would be.
I think we would have to have specifics. I don't think we can just move it into the capital fund.
No, I'm, I'm figuring by January, we'll have a list of new projects. I mean, I listed the ones I'm aware of, as, as you have, but I'm expecting boards will have their own, departments will have their own requests, new requests in January. And that's, I think our next step is, yeah, we definitely have to have, have to have input. The, um, I'm not sure that we've been impacted by job training assistance or anything like that with the personnel gear, right?
I don't think so, although I put that, that's kind of, okay, so let's move to, I kind of put public health, which was vaccines, testing, premium pay for people, um, job training, bringing in more, um, more police officers because you've had a spike in crime due to the pandemic. These are the things I read about.
I don't think we've had a spike in crime.
No, we didn't.
We haven't.
We haven't, but other, that's one of the uses.
But we've had a spike in all of these, which is board of health issues as well. Which we really need to, to focus on some of these, I think, to prepare ourselves.
Um, so I'm looking at, I didn't, we classified, I didn't put substance abuse. But public health services, that's number seven on mine, which, that's not ranked order, that's just how I remembered.
Yeah. Vaccines, tests, premium pay, but also mental health services, substitute services and public health services.
I think public safety, which kind of puts.
Is there a town nurse?
There isn't a town nurse, but we do pay Neshoba, um, you know, Neshoba Board of Health to, we do pay money for a nurse from there who comes to do the flu clinics and things like that.
Well.
So.
Mental health and substitutes, I mean, in, in essence, both of those can be addressed when we had the, um, when they came in and described with the survey that they're doing. They're also taking a next step and they're looking into a community drop-in center. And in this community drop-in center, we would see if we could subsidize for mental health services in that same facility.
Okay, so my question for that would be, um, if, if that is a project that we decide on, the, the question would be, how do we continue to support that going forward?
Correct.
Um, because if, and there's, there's language about this in the frequently asked questions, that whatever you do, if you do something like that, you have to have a plan for how it's going to be supported going forward.
Yep.
So that you aren't just dropping money on something that, um, is going to go away once these funds go.
And part of the survey is to establish, to get, it's almost like seed money to get it established. And with the other organizations that they're working with, they're the ones that will be the sustainable part of it.
So I, I guess the two then are board of health and economic impacts, which I have down on my one, six and seven, community supports. Food assistance, although from what I can tell, there is other ways for food assistance support right now.
Yep.
Through CDBG, um, and things like that.
T E O is doing a bang-up job in a lot of things that they're doing as well.
Well, where is their funding coming from though?
They're, they're getting grants and.
From CDBG and other community supports.
Right, we can supplement, we can supplement what they're doing, yeah.
So mortgage and rental, and then the affordable housing trust. If we're going to do the housing production plan that I saw, the housing trust needs seed money. to do the housing production plan that I saw, the housing trust needs seed money.
Correct.
To transfer the, we just voted to transfer those things, but we have no money.
Right.
Either in the town budget or the Affordable Housing Trust to do the legal work that needs done to record everything.
Can we use that money for that?
Yes, you can transfer funds for affordable housing to a nonprofit, um, and then the nonprofit is required to do the reporting. For the funds that they receive, if I'm reading this correctly, I guess Jennifer is.
So the Affordable Housing Trust would be the nonprofit that we would be able to, to give money to, and they in turn would be able to use that to fund the town properties transfer into.
Correct, um, yeah, and anything to support, any engineering support if they opt to do anything on those properties.
Yeah.
Um, engineering, we could fund that. I, I would say we start with giving them enough seed money to get the money, the properties in.
Property transferred.
And, um, consider working with a consultant to, for what to do with those properties.
Okay.
And then next year, what I, what I heard on that, who was it, MMA that did the affordable housing thing?
Yeah.
Couple weeks ago, month ago, um, that, because they have to see community involvement in order to, um, to be successful, you have to have community involvement.
Correct.
Anybody that's going to come in to do the building would want to see that.
Yep.
And so I would want enough funds this year to get started, enough funds next year to provide the support, um, for engineering or whatever.
Right, and we, we also have, the housing authority has the ability to activate the Habitat for Humanity to see if we can get another home built in town for that as well. So there are, there are other options that are, that are out there.
So in any event, I think there should be seed money transferred.
Yep.
And that goes into, um, economic inputs a little bit, that's on community supports, food, mortgage, rental.
Yeah.
Household assistance.
Um, I also feel that we need to, to look at small business, um, economic assistance, um, if there's, uh, we, we really need to, to start building some kind of, um, economic development here in town.
There were, there was a grant, I suppose through CDBG, that was advertised last year for, for small, um, business community support in Townsend. I would want to explore through MRPC how much, um, activity there was from Townsend on that grant.
Okay.
Because my feeling is there wasn't a lot.
This is why I mentioned, this is why I mentioned MRPC earlier, because that's the, the pieces that I would.
They would have that knowledge.
Absolutely.
Um, because from what I saw, it wasn't, um, wasn't like there was a big push for use of that.
Correct.
Um, so if we're going to do.
And we need to find out the reasons, and we need to find out what we need to do to encourage more growth.
I'm not saying not to encourage growth, I'm just saying, can the, okay.
We can, we can, we can get that, to that piece of it.
How are we on time? We should, um, wrap up.
Correct.
All right, uh, so we have other things up there, but these are our ideas, so I'm going to, um, move those all over to one side, so that the whiteboard is all Board of Selectmen ideas, maybe not all other, but get that all over there. And then I'm going to put up blanks up here, and I, I would like the, um, the other departments and the boards to come in, I put in, uh, I, I put some of the documents in sheet protectors that I want to like post up there, so that they can come in and look at it and see what the uses are, because one of the things that's looked for is, did we encourage community involvement at all in this? Or is it just the Board of Selectmen saying, this is it, this is what we're doing, you know, I would like to have.
Some other boards, for them.
Yeah, so, um, before I leave today, I'm going to post those all up, and I'm going to put planning, highway, building, you know, board of health, but, you know, council on aging, um, library.
Come in and put your list up there.
Public safety, and invite them all to come in and put, look at the uses, the possible uses, and then put up what they can, uh, what they think, and then I want to, if we're good with Jennifer, if she, if our contract with her is good, invite her to come to our next work session, um, or the following one, once we can finalize, I think she should be included, if we are, if she, if we're hiring her, she should be included in our discussions.
Mm-hmm.
For projects.
So if, if, so are we tasking Ross to look into the contract for?
I'm going to do it.
Okay.
Ross tasks it back to me.
Okay.
I'll talk to Jennifer.
Ross is getting used to that, you want that work on that?
He has a lot to do right now.
No, I, I understand that, so I just want to be clear that, do we need to have a vote that if, um, contingent upon, um, us being able to expand the contract?
We already voted. We already voted that.
Okay.
Didn't we?
Yes, to continue the contract with, um, capital services and solutions, right?
Yeah, and so, um, yeah, we already voted to do that.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, so I think that, uh, that's the end of the discussion. Do you want me to send out to the boards for ARPA, or do you want to?
I hate to keep dumping things back on you, but that would be great.
Okay, I will send.
Should be the other way around, but.
Well, you're part-time.
Well, I'm trying to get a special town meeting.
And there's, exactly, we have a lot going on that needs your attention right now, more importantly in other places, not that this isn't important, but, um, okay, so I will send the boards and I will check with Jennifer, um, and I'll CC, um, I'll CC, can I CC all of us on there, on my stuff to Jennifer and?
Distributing information.
Okay, all right, um, and, uh, we'll go from there. All right, so our next meeting, regular meeting is November 2nd, our next work session is November 8th, it'll be upstairs, I think, um, or, well, we'll at least have a Zoom for that, and, um.
Yeah, can I zoom in?
Part of that will be, um, TA search committee, and part of it will be ARPA funding, looking at what the other boards are, meeting with Jennifer, okay. So November 7th, November 8th are two next meeting dates. Are we ready to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Um, can I ask a question first?
Uh-huh.
Um, the budget summit, summit meeting with North Middlesex, is that, did we pick, um, a member?
I don't think we did, they asked me to come to it, I'm going to be out of town that day, so I thought that someone should represent the town.
I thought they wanted three people in, like, correct? Select board, finance, and the TA, isn't that right? That, I thought I read that somewhere. I would like, uh, um, does may I remember the BOS and FinCon? So I, I thought it was three people, FinCon, BOS, and, uh.
The town administrator.
And the town administrator, I thought that was given.
What I see is, who won the BOS is what I'm asking.
You're the liaison.
Correct.
I think I sent, did you do it something, I can't remember, um, I, I thought that it made sense to do the liaison to the, um, to the school committee.
Yeah, you're okay with that?
Are you okay with that, Chad?
Yeah, I'm pointing it on you, so.
Okay, then I move that the liaison for the school committee be the one to attend the budget summit.
A second.
That's not, when I've seen these in other towns, it's usually where the towns get up and explain how their budgets are really tight, and they can't afford a big school assessment increase, because they have the following things to cover, and then the school gets up and talks about how they need more funding to cover programs for children. It's good to, to air those concerns, it's somewhat frustrating because everybody, towns don't want to pay more and the schools want more, and that's as far as, but it's important to have these conversations going in the budget cycle. I, if I were attending, I would give my pitch that says, our revenues are increasing 2%, we can't have expenses increasing by more than 2%, otherwise eventually they're not sustainable.
Right.
So we have, the first budget summit is on Wednesday, November 10th, so if, like, you and I can meet before that, then I can.
Yeah, and I'm going to try to, I'm meeting with the finance committee tomorrow night, I'm going to try to have some of this information being pulled together so we can figure out where we're going to stand for the special, and then eventually the, the annual town meeting.
Okay.
Don't give them any more money, Chad.
I'm going to sit in on that meeting quietly without a word because I'm the liaison, I'm not going to talk at all because I'm not allowed as the liaison. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to appoint Chad as the board of selectmen, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton, Dr. Indian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. All right, so Chad, you're, uh, thank you for remembering that.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a vote on that.
Yeah.
And now I'll, I'll make a motion that we adjourn at whatever time.
Yeah, is it?
You love it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton, Dr. Indian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes, thank you, everybody.
All right, good work, Sasha. Thanks, Ross.